Okay, we will start. We will the our session number seven on the security on the Korean Peninsula is open. We have one hour and a half to address this particularly timely and difficult issue. Of course, I am Benjamin Oducouverture, I am a senior research fellow at the Foundation for the Research Strategique in Paris. Supporting to the support of effective multilateralism and the fact to address proliferation crisis directly are the two main pillars that were highlighted this morning by High Representative Federica Mogherini when explaining the EU approach towards international security issues. She said, I quoted this, some words up this morning, she said, “We have to deal with new crises exactly as we did with Iran,” and she added, “Only multilateral diplomacy can stop Pyongyang’s nuclear ambitions.” And could it mean a future involvement, direct, direct involvement of the EU into a new group of talks in the region, North East Asia? I think that this is a question to be asked. But whatever the way, the means, this is the canvas, if I may, the backdrop of the EU involvement. And as to our EU Non-Proliferation Consortium, we’ve been very much involved recently since we organized with the collaboration of the Korean Ministry of Foreign Affairs, a Track One Point Five seminar on DPRK ballistic and nuclear dimensions of the crisis in the peninsula last week in Seoul, bringing together some sixty participants, including many Korean officials dealing days and nights, according to them, with their northern neighbors and worries and ambitions. And I think that a real sense of urgency was shared among us, among all the participants, panelists, everyone, which means that this is not an issue to be dealt with by scholars just as an interesting proliferation case study, which it is, by the way, a very interesting one, but this is for real. This is the real word in North East Asia. And then smart solutions have to be found, which means realistic and responsible solutions. Neither literature nor political instrumentalization is needed. We within the consortium understand our task in that spirit. Having said that, it’s my pleasure to give the floor to our three speakers this afternoon. The three of them come from the region. The countries are key stakeholders, the Republic of Korea, China, and Russia. And the entire involvement of China and Russia, of course, being to some extent allies to the DPRK against the WMD programs of Pyongyang, is a core issue in the current deadlock, and it must be addressed along with others’ issues. So I will first ask Alexander Vorontsov from the Russian Academy of Sciences to take the floor, then Cheng Xiahe, sorry for.
It’s hard for us. Cheng Xiahe.
Cheng Xiahe.
Cheng.
Cheng, from Renmin University of China. And Du Yun, who participated in our talks in Seoul last week. So please, Alexander, you have ten minutes, and ten, and ten, and we’ll open the floor. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, organizer of the conference. This is extremely important and highly representative forum. And I’m very grateful to Mr. Chair that you started reminding us that today, Madame Mogherini idea, I also wanted to concentrate attention to her assessments, because now we can see that very recently, there’s a number of people, number of voices, who understand that there’s a quite long period of very one-sided policy towards North Korea, which was concentrated only sanctions, pressure, isolation increasing, such policy did not work. And we have had for a long time that pressure, only pressure, sanctions does not work only because sanctions are not enough. We should increase sanctions. Let’s stop any kind of talks. We should wait when sanctions imposed by the recent UN Security Council resolution on March of this year will be resulted, and let’s the sanction work, and so on, and et cetera, et cetera. And it was difficult to explain to my colleagues in many countries that I was surprised how it was possible not to see very clear, very simple reality, very strong mutual independence of two realities, to be shot, more sanctions, more pressure against North Korea. North Korea means only more nukes and missiles inside of North Korea. It’s a strong correlation. Sanctions means more nukes. And just now, many peoples, and of course, I’m happy was to hear today of Madame Mogherini expression, and of course, such knowledgeable and well-informed people, like Mr. James Clapper assessment, very recent assessment, which was discussed today also, and many others in South Korea, in the United States, in Europe, more and more understand that only sanctions, only carrots without, only sticks, I’m sorry, without carrot does not work. And engagement and negotiations restarting is necessary, and I agree with Madame Mogherini that only multilateral diplomacy can stop nuclear program. And I think it’s reasonable to hear what North Korean peoples are speaking. Of course, they are grave, they are awful, violated of Security Council resolutions. They must, they must, they must to improve, they must to stop, they must to disarm, but not to hear what they are speaking. We can disagree, strongly disagree with their position, with their arguments, but not to hear and neglect totally, ignore totally, their way of thinking and assessments of situation, I think it’s also unreasonable and not rational. And what they are speaking, I’m visiting North Korea every year, this year two times and last time two weeks ago, and Foreign Ministry people are speaking when I ask them about the possibility of negotiations, for example, with the United States. There is, maybe a mistake, but it’s my perception, there is widespread perceptions in the West countries that talk with North Korea is some kind of gift to North Korea. They won’t talk very much with the United States, first of all, of course, and talk is some kind of gift present, but North Korean people are speaking, I mean diplomats in Foreign Ministry, Fifth Department, for example, which dealing with relation between the United States and North Korea. Yes, American guys are speaking. We don’t want to have talk for talk in regards to the six-party talk restarting. It’s their position, we understand this position, but our position is, we don’t to have talk for our capitulation. It’s our position. And these two lines are very different lines, and we cannot see any kind of opportunity to, or some changes in these lines. What does it mean? It means that the United States will follow their own lines, it’s increasing sanctions, increasing military pressure, isolation, okay, let’s them do it, but we will follow our lines, increase our military capability, and first of all, nuclear capability. It’s our line, it’s our choice, and they are doing it, not only speaking, they are doing it. What does it mean, what it’s a result of their absence, lack of any dialogue and negotiations? And from my point of view, situation is aggravating indeed, and it’s more dangerous than one year ago, one year ago, two years ago, five years ago, because their intolerance from both sides are increasing, and position of Republic of Korea government are also quite intolerable. They cut all lines of communication with North Korea purposely, and they are sure that collapse of North Korea is imminent and will be very, very soon, but people who are visiting North Korea can see the improvement of economy of North Korea. I can see, I’m visiting every year, the beginning from 2000, okay, yes, the second half of 19th was very deep, very, very, very painful economic crisis inside of North Korea, but beginning from the 2000, very gradual but steady economic improvement started, and last two, three years, this improvement became much more accelerated. So, I don’t know why, I don’t know by what means, I can only guess, but it’s, of course, for me, it’s also very surprisingly, but at least for the today, Kim Jong-un succeeded to fulfill his promise to expand John No Sun, to develop simultaneously civil economy, to improve living standards of populations, and to increase nuclear arsenal. It’s real fact, I don’t know what will be tomorrow, but until now, these two lines are developing, and economy, civil economy, and living standards of population are very gradually but increasing. They started more decisively economic reform, market oriented economic reform, and of course, for sure, it’s one of the source of their economic successful development. So the real picture of North Korea is not much, is not hopeless. They are became more self-confidence, not only in the words, but economic is better, defense capability also better. And to my mind, in this situation, when intolerance and decisiveness from both sides are increasing, when in Seoul, more and more frequently are speaking about the decapitated prevent strike on North Korea, and North Korea repeat also quite aggressively, for example, for the last time, two weeks ago, when Foreign Ministry, they told me, I am listening for the first time, that if the United States will really, or South Korea is alliance, will really attack us very limited, or do something practical against us in military way, our first goal will be to destroy Guam. Guam island will be destroyed and will disappear underwater, to speak what they told. Of course, very, very unhappy situation, and if it will be continued, I can see only two way out of the situation. All out war to eliminate North Korea, but it will be, as we can understand, awful scenario for all Korean Peninsula, South Korea will be also destroyed very, very, very greatly, or negotiations, or engagement, what Madame Mogherini emphasized today. And what kind of negotiations? Of course, it’s very difficult. We do remember the approach of the United States and their alliance to the six-party talk restarting, precondition, three steps, as my perception is, negotiations is some kind of gift for North Korea. But North Korea position is that negotiations can be, maybe, successful only if United States will change their mindset. And to my mind, all of us, we should a little bit to correct our perception of real today situation, and maybe to correct our previous approaches, to some extent, maybe change our mindset, but according North Korea, to change mindset means that United States, first of all, and all countries in the world should accept and recognize their nuclear status. Of course, it’s unacceptable, but what from my point of view is more acceptable and maybe really important is to accept, not only in the words, but in our practical deals, the equal rights of North Korea in course of negotiations, the equal rights respect, and sovereignty respects. It’s very crucially important for North Korea, they are very, very much sensitive to it. Some prestigious case also, but just now, they answered me that all kind of talk contact with the previous US administration are impossible, why? Because they included personally Kim Jong-un in the repression or sanction list, personally, Kim Jong-un, leader of the state. It’s a huge humiliation, they told United States, crossed red line, and we stopped all official contacts with the United States, only Track Two conferences and contacts in framework of Track Two. Okay, I finish. So to restart negotiations, I think we should start from the relatively simple, modest, but realistic goals. We should create some kind mutually acceptable agenda from all party involved, maybe it will be six-party talks, maybe some other format, but mutually acceptable agenda, and we should put forward and to achieve for us achievable goals, achievable goals, maybe very modest for the first step, and freeze of their nuclear program, if we will achieve it in the first or second stage, it will be very important, very important to result. Somebody are speaking it’s not so important, it’s not enough, only disarmament, but we should understand that for the time being, and in the at least short prospect, it’s impossible. We should start from something what is possible. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vorontsov, for these very interesting alternative options. Cheng, please.
Thank you, Chairman, and also thank organizers for inviting me here, particularly the TAPAS. And I like to see the situations on Creepiness in this ways, the situations is very volatile and very dangerous, that we haven’t seen in the past two or three decades. It’s volatile because lot of things remain unsettled. For examples, the DPRK is, we continue to test its missiles, the possible six nuclear detonations, and to the old chaos, the political situation in South Koreans sees becomes an international attraction, one of the international attractions. And also, in addition to DPRK’s nuclear and missile provocations, and we find China and Russia on one side, and the United States and South Korea on the other side, has been locked, and still locked, in a dispute regarding THAAD. So all the senses is interacted with each other, and make the situation on Creepiness much volatile. And this more dangerous because in the past one years, the DPRK has conducted nuclear tests for two times, and also tested the missiles, according to my account, about twenty-six times, twenty-six times. And United States and the South Koreans heightened its preparedness for any possible military conflict with the DPRK’s, military exercises, and rotating showing of strategic weapons by the United States, and also these rumors spreading that the United States and South Koreans may take preemptive actions, military actions against DPRK’s and DPRK’s leaders. So the situation has become much dangerous. So the, the lot of regions could contribute such a kind of situation, but DPRK’s nuclear and missile issues has been and still one of the major sources of tensions in the regions. And we come over here not to celebrate the ultimate solutions of DPRK’s nuclear and missiles dispute. We come over here particularly for me to discuss DPRK’s nuclear issues, and this issues has been remain unsettled for more than nearly three decades. And the United States and the DPRK has signed agreed framework in attempt to settle the DPRK’s nuclear issues, it failed, and China hosted and chaired a six-party talks in attempt to settle DPRK’s nuclear issues, and so far failed. And so DPRK’s nuclear issues still remain on table, still irritated, and divide international community. And also the DPRK’s nuclear and missiles programs had entered a very critical period of time, and these countries is crossing, is crossings a threshold, technology threshold of combining nuclear warhead and various missiles, and possibly, these countries, we plan to deploy the nuclear weapons that could be used against South Koreans, United States, Japan, and possibly China. And also, we witness the public opinions is divided with regard to DPRK’s nuclear programs future, and as the colleagues mentioned, the United States National Intelligence Directors, James Clappers, publicly mentioned, the United States efforts to seek denuclearizations of DPRK’s seemingly is a lost cause. But on the other hand, and the United States deputies, State Secretaries Blinkens, still maintained the United States aim, objective to pursue denuclearizations of DPRK remain unchanged. And some of the Chinese scholars also believe it’s impossible to persuade DPRK to abandon, it’s impossible to force DPRK to abandon its nuclear programs, and some stills maintains. If we work hard and pressure these countries more hard, and maybe it’s the regime opinions make choice between regime survive and abandonment of the nuclear programs. But nonetheless, I believe so far, the international efforts to pressure and persuade DPRK to abandon its nuclear program failed, but I’m not sure whether or not the efforts will continue to fail in the futures. There are a number of reasons, yeah, contributed to faced failures of the international efforts. Number ones, the DPRK’s determination to press ahead with nuclear and missile development. If these countries ignore all the cost it may pay for its nuclear programs, and define internationals denouncement, and United Nations Security Council’s resolutions, and these countries will do that, and nobody can stop it. So I think that’s the fundamental reasons. Second, the absence of the leadership in the international communities, particularly the United States and China’s, the two most important countries, the key stakeholders in this, on this issues, refuse to assume the leadership, and the United States adopted so-called strategic patient strategies, and Chinese adopted it, according to some of the South Korean friends’ characterizations, China’s version of strategic patience. But one thing for sure, China and the United States, that’s two countries which have the capacity to exercise its leadership in the past years, have no political will to do so, and the absence of the leadership lead to a number of dismayed consequences. Number ones, the lack of coordinations between among the members, key members of the six-party talks, and the other five members of the six-party talks could not speak in one voice, and cannot take actions in concert, even though they share the same positions against DPRK’s nuclear programs. And also, the absence of the leadership lead to the absence of effective proposals that could help to settle the DPRK’s nuclear issues. In the past years, there’s a lot of proposals spread among the key members of the six-party talks, but for me, none of them were effective and efficient, efficient. So I have to finish it up, and about one or two minutes. So in order to address DPRK’s nuclear and missile provocations, I like to suggest, number ones, and China and the United States need to stand up and turn their zero-sum game into a plus-sum games, because in the past years, the two countries played zero-sum game on the Creepiness, I think the need to turn such a kind of game into a win-win situations, and exercise a leadership, exercise a leadership, certainly such a kind of leadership could not exclude other key members, South Koreans, and Russians, and Japan, North Koreans, but China and the United States need to assume more responsibilities. And second, the two countries, China and the United States, need to change its outdated policies, and to take proactive approach. policies, and to take proactive approach to seek solutions to DPRK's nuclear issues. Third, and to avoid, all the key stakeholders need to avoid taking unilateral actions that means cause suspicions, divisions among other members, and also avoid thinking point each others, and the China and the United States have played in the past years. And last, but not least, other members, because to deal, to cope with DPRK's nuclear and provocations, not one single country's missions, his collective develop endeavors. So all the members, China, United States, South Korea, and Japan, need to synchronize their policies, hopefully early next years, after the United States new president is elected, and soon his president six. So I'll stop here, thank you.
Thank you very much, Cheng. Du Yan, share with us your vision, the objective of negotiation, your methodology, please.
Oh, yes. Well, first, I would like to thank Mark and Benjamin and the organizers of this very important and timely conference. I, as Benjamin just said, will jump right into the way forward. I will give you my bare-bones bottom lines, and perhaps during the Q and A, I can unpack some of the context behind what I'm about to say. First, it is difficult to find or expect a new silver bullet idea that will magically just solve this problem, because we're dealing with generally the same demands from each party. In terms of the vision and end states, we need a grand design for a stable and prosperous Northeast Asia. This includes a nuclear weapons-free North Korea, or some would say argue Korean Peninsula. It includes a region that coexists peacefully with North Korea eventually integrated in the community, and it involves and includes an end to the Korean War, establishment of a peace regime, and eventual reunification of the peninsula. A holistic, comprehensive policy toward North Korea is imperative. A simple, narrow, non-proliferation approach, only addressing Pyongyang's nuclear missile programs, will not solve the North Korea problem or its intertwined regional challenges. Now, there's a lot of talk and a lot of frustration about the lack of talks between the US and North Korea and involved parties. However, currently, the US and North Korea, they each domestically lack the political space to engage in serious negotiations. But when the time is ripe, negotiations, of course, are the primary way to find a way forward. Now, the objective of negotiations, as an interim goal, it always has been, and it should continue to be, a verifiable, a verified freeze, but this should not be the ultimate objective. The longer term and ultimate objective must be complete and verifiable denuclearization, regardless of how difficult or unrealistic this may appear today, or else the region will face bigger nuclear challenges, and it will blow a grave, it will deal a grave blow to the non-proliferation regime if we do not make sure that the end goal is complete denuclearization. The other objective of negotiations, well, sure, it involves a peace treaty, but a peace treaty discussions too soon will hold nuclear talks hostage to peace treaty talks, and so this should not commence too soon. There was clear understanding during the Six Party Talks process that discussions for a peace treaty or peace regime would occur once the relevant parties were able to draw a blueprint for what the third and final stage of dismantlement might look like. So North Korea knows this, and it agreed to this, so it has, it should and has not forgotten that history. Well, how do we get there? In terms of methodology, I believe we must retain the Six Party Talks agreements and its framework and its process with necessary upgrades to meet today's challenges. This Six Party process serves critical political and functional purposes, and addresses all parties' concerns, including and especially Pyongyang's security concerns. It has already established a pathway to the vision and end states I mentioned above, and ensures, and ensures buy-in and assistance from necessary countries like Japan and Russia that are needed to implement the deals in its entirety. And within this framework, various geometric configurations of negotiations can talk, can convene freely within the Six Party framework, without having to reinvent the wheel for negotiations. Now, going forward, the next Clinton administration should employ a toughness and readiness approach. Now, I did not coin this concept, it was actually coined by a brilliant colleague of mine. It should begin, the next administration should begin a comprehensive policy review, up and down, all around, bottom up, top down, a review during the transition, but of course in earnest in the first one hundred days of office, that reviews and tests traditional and bold new thinking across the entire spectrum of pressure and engagement. Now, the elements for this toughness and diplomatic readiness approach, I believe some, there are some pillars that are included. The first is effective and credible pressure to enable diplomacy to work effectively. Now, this approach is because of where we are today in the security situation, and having dealt with this, and having had so much experience with this in negotiations for over twenty years. It includes a priority to US alliances and alliance coordination. It includes strengthened defense deterrence and military readiness to deal with future North Korean provocations and any October surprises. It includes pressure and engagement with China where necessary and needed, and it includes a readiness to negotiate a reasonable deal with North Korea when the time comes. Finally, China also has the responsibility to try newer and bolder measures going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Du Yan. Thank you very much, the three of you. I note that none of you addressed the question of an EU leverage in the future.
We spent the whole week. Last week was all about that. Last week was all about it.
I know, I know, but we are in Brussels. We're not in Seoul anymore.
You have good history of engagement.
I, we know, absolutely, this, this is the point, and this is the reason why maybe the EU is so.
But you withdrew, you withdrew from the process.
Absolutely, the reason why maybe the EU has become so shy about this, after the collapse of the Kido, we all know this story. But still, be gentle, we are in Brussels. Do you think there is a leverage for the EU in the year and the future years to come? Is the EU being a global player on non-proliferation disarmament matters? And if it is so, what leverage is, well, I'm talking about EU, the EU, of course, I'm talking about the member states of the EU, and we know the disagreements within member states, within the EU on DPRK issue, of course. Thank you very much for, 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 for all these. The floor is open. I'm sure we have, yes, we have so many people, we try to have maybe four or five, okay, three or four rounds of question. Charlotte Bousillon first, Maurizio, you sir, because you wanted the floor this morning, you had not, because we did not want to give you the floor, and then Ambassador Trezor and Mr. Einhorn, okay? First wave, please.
Thank you very much. Charlotte Bousillon, Assistant Professor at the Sorbonne Law School in Paris. Deion, I'm very glad to see you.
It's so good to see you again, too.
Are you sure it work?
It works. Is it working? Yeah? So Benjamin, I'm very glad you picked on the question of the EU role, so I will spare this to you. I was curious to know from the panelists whether you have views on the way to bring North Korea to abide by its undertakings. We know from the past that this is not a problem for North Korea to undertake new obligations, but very quickly, these are violated again. So do you see new means, techniques to build confidence and to accompany the implementation of future undertakings? Thank you.
Thank you. Maurizio Martellini here.
Congratulation. I appreciate very much the intervention of Cheng, Ms. Cheng. My comment, I visited many times Pyongyang, my comment is very short. The philosophy of the EU non-proliferation is not only multilateralism, it's also concrete cooperative mechanism like, for instance, medical diplomacy, scientist engagement, and other things like we done in the past after the Cold War. So I guess that, I fully agree that it's almost impossible to see a solution of this conundrum without a real comprehensive package. And the EU must play, since your question is crucial, must play a more central role in terms of cooperative engagement, even if North Korea is a sort of paria state or like that, I never believe in this kind of language. So this is very important, because in all my visits there, there is mistrust, basically mistrust. So why not instead to make a generic scientific, I mean, policy discussion about multilateralism, why not to apply the mechanism that we used in the past vis-à-vis countries in transition?
Thank you, Maurizio.
Sir.
The microphone.
My first question goes to Mrs. Kim. Is North Korea a rational or irrational state in managing the nuclear crisis? I ask a question to Mr. Cheng, to what extent, to what extent China has leverage on North Korea in solving the nuclear crisis? Thank you.
Ambassador Trezor has just written a very interesting piece on DPRK, which is published on the website of the consortium, please.
Thank you. Thank you for mentioning. Indeed, to respond to your question, Mr. Chairman, about the possible role of the EU, this is not a particularly propitious time for negotiations, not only because of the present tension, but also because the United States and later the Republic of Korea are going to celebrate presidential elections, so it will take time, in any case, to establish a new, a new policy. But having said that, the EU has certain credentials, not only from a historical point of view, but also more recently because of its constructive role in solving of the uranium nuclear crisis. This morning, Federica Mogherini called for innovative suggestions, innovative solutions to this issue, and indeed, the precedent of the way in which the European, Europe overcame the Cold War, especially through the establishment of the OSE, the whole process of Helsinki, of confidence in measures and so on, is, let's say, a precedent which has been studied very closely by the two Korean sides, not necessarily to follow exactly the same pattern, but in any. But if we want to go into more detail, there's also the precedent of the INF Treaty, which in the eighties was an instrument to overcome the Cold War. In that occasion, to respond to the deployment in Russia of certain types Soviet Union, certain types of missiles, NATO countries made a so-called double decision, on one hand to deploy new missiles equivalent to the Russian deployment, and on the other side, to propose a negotiation to eliminate them. A similar situation is now taking place in the Korean Peninsula, where the United States and the Republic of Korea intended to deploy missile defense terminal, the Vatad missiles, which is initiative which is hated by China and Russia. So indeed, there could be a similarity, even if this deployment which will take place would become a kind of bargaining chip to convince DPRK to get rid of its nuclear program in exchange of the non-deployment or of the withdrawal of these missile defense systems in South Korea. This is an idea which I put to the, to the panel, of course, it deserves a lot of thinking, but in any case, I would like to have some preliminary reactions.
Thank you, Mr. Ambassador. Robert Einhorn, and then we close the first round.
Thank you. Alexander, I agree with you and High Representative Mogherini, that pressure alone is not going to resolve this problem. I think no matter how much pressure North Korea will continue on its current course, diplomacy negotiations will be essential to get North Korea to, to freeze and roll back its program. But diplomacy without sufficient leverage is not going to work either. And I think it's worth looking back to the Iran case. Negotiations with Iran proceeded for three or four years, with Iran under sanctions, but not terribly strong sanctions, and Iran was not serious about negotiations during that period. But then in the 2012, 2013 period, sanctions really ratcheted up, and in part because China played a major role. It cut back its imports of Iranian crude oil by over fifty percent. Now, China had its own way of doing that, it never admitted it, it published on some obscure Chinese website that it had decided to diversify its sources of crude oil, but nonetheless, it cut back, and that sent a very powerful signal to Iran, and then negotiations began in earnest after that point. I think the same will be true in the North Korea case. At the present time, pressures against North Korea are not sufficient, and have to be ratcheted up. There's a framework in Resolution 2270 to do that, and now there are discussions in New York on even stronger sanctions. But there are, you know, there are ways that Security Council members can create certain loopholes. I'm thinking in particular about the import of North Korean coal and other minerals. So my question is this, is there a recognition, and I'm speaking really to Mr. Chung, Mr. Bronson, whether sanctions have to be strengthened quite a bit before the leverage will be there to get the kind of negotiated solution that you've all talked about? And I think what you say, Alexander, about starting with a freeze en route to eventual denuclearization is the right way to go, but at the present time, I don't think there's sufficient leverage to get there.
Thank you very much, this very, very specific comment. I'm sure we all are impatient to hear your answers. First, Du Yan, Cheng, and Alexander, if you wish.
Sure. Okay. I was hoping to go last, but that's fine. On the question of EU
On the question of EU rule, and I know we've had several discussions, well, extensive discussions last week in Seoul. But my, I guess my bottom line for now is I cannot, in practical terms, I'm not sure how that would work. We have experienced in the six-party talks where it was difficult enough to align and come to consensus and try to figure out a way to align all six different interests. And so to have another actor at the table, I'm not sure how that would work practically and feasibly. Although last week in Seoul, Charlotte did mention an idea of perhaps giving the EU a facilitator role and not a vote at the table. And that's something that we could probably examine. However, at the same time, we've had, and I say this with all due respect to all of my Chinese colleagues, but in the past, we've seen in the six-party talks that yes, China has been active and proactive, but it eventually came to a situation where China ended up playing more the bookkeeper of schedules and not active facilitator. And so these are some factors that we should consider realistically and practically going forward. On the question of whether North Korea is a rational actor or not, I would say that North Korea is a rational actor, or Kim Jong-un and his predecessors are. And I say this because I'm using the classical definition that we use in IR. The Kims act in their national interest. And so they don't, and they make calculations according to the national interest. And they don't do anything that is suicidal for their regime. And so in that sense, I say yes. In terms of, and I agree with everything that Bob said, so I don't have to reiterate. There's something that we need to remember. And I know there are a lot of people, again, who are frustrated that there aren't active discussions and negotiations or even just talks between the US and North Korea. But we do need to remember that during the Obama administration, and up until very recently, North Korea has actually rejected the administration's invitations for talks. So we're in a situation where it's even difficult to bring North Korea to the table to just talk. And there had been a point in very recent history that where the Obama administration was openly, openly open to having bilateral discussions without any preconditions, anytime, anywhere. But even the North has rejected that. And so we're in a situation where it's not just a matter of talking. It's a matter of trying to get them to the table. And I think part of this reason is the difficulty in getting North Korea to the table now is first, they only want to resume discussions on their terms. But also, I wonder if they, you know, we talk about leverage building for pressure on our side. I wonder if the North is in their process of trying to build their own leverage to enter into negotiations. And that leverage is not only, first and foremost, it's on the nuclear missile capabilities, but it's not just that. I think it's more comprehensive for them to build their country into a more quote-unquote powerful state before they can enter into these negotiations. So that's something to consider. The question about the comments on THAAD and other precedents, realistically, I don't see the US or South Korea using THAAD as a bargaining chip at all. And the other precedents, the context is different. We're in a situation, the reality is, is that the US, South Korea, the international community will not recognize North Korea as a nuclear open state. And so we need to keep that context in mind when we're thinking of new ideas and how to incentivize or find solutions, to find practical solutions on this matter.
Okay, so there's a number of questions I have to address. Number one, whether or not it's a bargaining chip. And I may disagree with you.
Sure, disagree all the way.
And it's a bargaining chip. And the United States government made it very clear that South Korean United States tried to deploy the SARS system in attempt to not push China to turn against the DPRK. And that's the one move on the part of the United States and South Koreans. But whether or not it's a bargaining chip, it could be exchanged for some things. I don't think so. And that's the one. The EU rules. And I personally is once opposed EU's participations of the six-party talks. A few years ago, South Koreans tried to invite DPRK, EU, to attend six-party talk. And I made it clear on the grounds. Number one, I don't know, I didn't know whether or not EU had strong motivations to attend. As EU struggle to deal with Russia, Ukrainians, to deal with the financial crisis. Second, the member states of the six-party talk, their relationship are quite complicated. United States, Japan and South Koreans could conduct more consultations and could take united positions within the six-party talk and form a small bloc, and China and Russians and work together. So EU's participations will complicate the compositions of the six-party talk and tilt the balance power within the six-party toward United States, South Korea and Japan. But recently, I changed my minds a little bit and I'm quite open to flexible, multiple dialogues. Tletto dialogue, five-party dialogue, six-party dialogue, whatevers, and keep the dialogue going on. And sir, the gentleman's questions, the China's leverages on DPRK. China has quite strong leverages of the DPRK since China is DPRK's immediate neighbor and number one trading partner. But the problem is whether or not China has political will to use the leverages. But there's two factors I think have more impact on China's thinking whether or not use the leverage to achieve political objectives. The number one is whether or not DPRK is deserved. Since China now processes a number of strong weapons, heavy weapons. The weapon China, if China use the heavy weapons, and the weapons can be used to kill the regime in Pyongyang. Second, and Pyongyang has been China's traditional strategic asset. And even though more and more Chinese believe the DPRK is not strategic asset, it's a strategic burden. But I think that most Chinese scholars still believe DPRK is valuable, strategic asset. It's not time for China to abandon the asset lightly. So if China need to change its mind to use the strong weapon against DPRK, China need, China and the United States need to cut big deals to build trust and turn their zero-sum game so far into some kind of plus-sum game. If such game could not be changed, and I don't think China will abandon DPRK. So that seems has more to do with the grand relationship between China and the United States. Particularly, the competitions between two countries has been hidden up. So how to handle the DPRK's nuclear provocation has something to do with the ongoing development of the relationship between China and the United States. And I think I missed, any other questions? I'm going to stop here.
Okay. Do you want to quickly to answer, Young?
So to briefly continue the debate between Xia He and me on THAAD. There is a difference between a bargaining chip and versus a political card. Now, as long as THAAD is there because of the threat posed by North Korea's short and mid-range missiles. However, yes, South Korea has begun to realize that there is political utility of THAAD in terms of trying to persuade China to make, to be more proactive and to make a more decisive decision on North Korea. But at the same time, I still, again, cannot see a scenario where the US and South Korea would use it to bargain away THAAD under certain circumstances. Now, the political use of it to persuade China has been, you know, we don't need THAAD if we didn't have the North Korean nuclear missile problem. And as an incentive and as a persuasion point for China. Now, that said, one variable in this equation really is the fate of THAAD, meaning whether THAAD will complete its deployment within this South Korean presidential term and who is the next South Korean president. If we have a progressive South Korean president, that might make this equation a little bit different. But we'll have to see how that unfolds going forward in the months to come.
The quick response.
Very quick.
Very quick, I tell you what, sir. And I still maintains it's a bargaining chip. But the problem is, the bargaining chip is too huge. And China so far does not want to make, to make a deal to change anything with it.
Thank you very much for the nice questions. And first question, it's a lady asked about, is it possible to create some new tools, instrument to force North Korea to fulfill their obligation? I think it's to maybe some extent widespread misconceptions that only North Korea violates their obligations. All other parties involved are strongly committed to their obligation and only North Korea. By time, next, 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 violate. I do remember when I was in the Brookings Institution, and it was, as usually, there are a lot of meetings and conferences in DC. And in one conference dealing with North Korea, very famous and very experienced American expert, Mr. Segal, created some kind of table. And he closed one column of table and showed another one. And in this part was very in detail, in detail, pointed all agreement which North Korea violated. When and in which point they violated many, many, many agreements and obligations. And all peoples in the floor were agree. Yes, we do remember these agreements. We do remember their violations. After it, he opened the second half of the table. And in this part were pointed when the United States violated their obligations. And the picture became absolutely as mirror, the same. The same obligation were violated by both sides. Who was the first? Who was the second? That's another question. So we do remember when the North Korea feel that they are engaged in some agreement, for example, like agreed framework of 1994. They were abided for quite a long time to these obligations. When they were sure that six-party talk were developed seriously, they also did not violate their obligations. By the way, in 2009, when six-party talk stopped, not only North Korea violated their obligations. And South Korea also did not fulfill completely their obligation dealing with the second stage of denuclearization and et cetera. And it's an important question because when arms control, arms reductions, nonproliferation agenda only is in center of the topic, North Korea is ready to cooperate. But when they began to feel that there is a hidden agenda aimed at regime change and nonproliferation agreement are using as cover to produce, to put forward the hidden agenda, they began to talk, we are not interested in such kind of negotiations. So it's also important to take into consideration. But question, of course, very, very important. Have to find some mechanism to provide the fulfillment of obligation. But it's concern not only North Korea, but all party involved. And Russia, for example, long time ago proposed the crossed obligation of all party involved, for example. Everybody look to each other, have you fulfill your obligation. And Mr. Ankh, of course, I agree with your picture. And of course, I agree that in case of Iran, the really painful sanctions in the last stage of sanction policy worked, worked. And there are many attempts to compare Iran situation and North Korea situation. But there are many differences, yes, as you know better than me. Iran economy was incomparably, much more deeply and widely involved, engaged in world economy. It was more easy to find and to implement really very sensitive sanctions against economy of Iran. North Korea engagement and interdependence with the world much more less. The second important difference, in that period of time of sanctions, Iran did not produce nuclear weapon. North Korea is doing. And if sanctions will continually increase, increased, undoubtedly, at least for me, it's undoubtedly, they will continue to produce also nukes and missiles program. And just now, they reached the stage of their missile nuclear programs, long term, yes. But now they reach stage when they succeeded to produce more sophisticated and advanced kind of weapons and missiles. So if we will continue the present policy and will wait when sanctions will give result, they will succeed to produce a few more nuclear tests, missile tests, and will reach more high level of their nuclear arsenal. And when negotiation will start, it will be more difficult to reduce every step ahead in the development of their nuclear program make more difficult to force the country to disarm, to make step back. So we should also take into consideration this reality. And finally, the picture is nice, but in the real world, when the, for example, six-party talks participants, interests are not equal, not the same. Every country has their own interest objectively. For example, the United States is placed far from Korean Peninsula. China and Russia has the joint border with North Korea. And objectively, we maybe more than you are sensitive in order to prevent all our war in Korea because it will affect us directly and strongly. So China and Russia objectively will define and fulfill sanctions measure more carefully. And in practical way, have to, for example, Russia has 17 kilometers of joint border, yes, with North Korea. China, 1,300. Have to close totally this border in practical way. Is it achievable? For example, even the United States with their... For example, even the United States with their, the most advanced, sophisticated, technical, military and et cetera, et cetera means have difficulties to close totally or to control strictly the border with Mexico.
Trump was gonna take care of that.
Maybe, maybe. But there were attempts, yes, not only voices to attempt to create wall along the border, yes, with Mexico. And China also should to create wall on the border with North Korea. Practically, it's not easy. So I think we should calculate carefully, have all pro and contra in this scenario.
Thank you, Dr. Veronsov. Well, I think we can all agree on the fact that unfortunately DPRK is not part of our globalized world. The reason why most of the trade of the country is made with China and Russia, which of course, it's a basis for leverage, if I may. We have a second round of questions. First, sir, then you, sir.
I will give my question to you.
Okay, then you second and Mark then, and we'll see after, okay? Please make it fast because we just have 15 minutes.
Thank you. I'm Erwin Hector from Germany. Starting from the fact that everyone agrees that the six-party talks are stuck and we are encouraged to have more imagination and to seek more smart multilateralism. Now, I'm going to let my imagination run and forget about multilateralism. I invite you to a thought experiment, not along the lines of multilateralism, but bilateralism. Let us assume that North and South Korea come together to seek unification. Everyone will agree, very unlikely. Let's just assume it. Let's assume that conditions, for whatever reasons, are appropriate for such a development. North and South Korea seek unification. And remember, I come from Germany and I have the memory that 30 years ago, it was impossible to imagine that the two German states could come together to form a unified sovereign state. Now, let us assume in this course of unification, North Korea would not renounce its nuclear weapons. And to inject an element of reality, let us assume that the two countries would not come together like the German two states in one stroke, form one sovereign state. But let us assume these states, as an intermediate stage, agreed to form some confederation. One party of this confederation is still a unified, sorry, is still a nuclear armed country. What happens then? It is not unclear in terms of the Nuclear Not-Proliferation Treaty. And it is not clear how the world community would react. Probably the world community, the Security Council would step in if it's one sovereign country with nuclear weapons.
Thank you for your comment because we are running out of time.
Well, my invitation is simply consider this possibility. What would it mean for the non-proliferation?
Okay, thank you very much. Well, which is very hazardous scenario, if I may, but why not? Please.
I have two short comments, but I will keep them both brief. When you mentioned about your, sorry, Renate Christina, I'm from Rusey. When you mentioned about your trips to North Korea and you mentioned the economy is looking prosperous, do you think that's authentic and how far do you think that actually spreads beyond what you see as a visitor? And do you think that's sustainable? And if not, what then happens to the security on the peninsula if that economic prosperity that you've witnessed is not long term? And secondly, for Ms. Kim, how do you think the domestic political situation in South Korea at the moment is going to hinder any prospect of making headway with the North Korean nuclear issue? I think the most recent polls I saw this morning were Park's rating was down to something like 9% of approval. And if that then impacts how the relationship she should manage to build up with Japan in terms of the Comfort Women Deal, if that then doesn't go ahead and that impacts broader relations with Japan, how does that impact the way the region can move forward cohesively?
Thank you. Mark?
Mark Fitzpatrick, double I, double S. When we talk about the EU role, it's usually engagement and it's usually how can we engage more? But the engagement dial is not just in one direction, it can be turned in the other direction. Seven EU states have embassies in Pyongyang with ambassadors. South Korea's government policy is to try to isolate North Korea. The mood in Seoul when we were at the conference was one of, this is no longer business as usual. Things have gotten so dire with North Korea's escalation of nuclear and missile testing that real pressure has to be put on North Korea. So what other ways can the EU put pressure on? I think this is something that also needs to be considered. Visas can be denied, travel bans can be imposed. The travel warning not to go to North Korea could be enforced. North Korean money men who somehow accumulate money in European countries and send them back to Kim Jong-un, this, you know, pressure could be put on to stop this. I think there are ways that European countries might be asked in the next couple of years, what more they can do to add to the pressure in. I'm not advocating it right now, but this is something that will need to be on the policy agenda.
Thank you. Sir?
Thank you.
So, and the last one, after.
Thank you. It's working? Thank you. My name is Adair T. Vicent, I am from European University Institute. I have two questions, short ones, I believe. The first one is about if we consider that North Korea is actually a rational actor, then we have to think about why they have nuclear weapons. And one of the two reasons I think about is protection of the regime, their protection, and also territorial integrity. So if you believe in this, what kind of assurances P5 or another important states could give to North Korea for them to disarm their nuclear weapons? And take into account that, for instance, the 1994 with the past membrane didn't actually work on that, making that assurance. Second question is about European Union. One of the biggest assumptions of the European Union in terms of foreign policy is that they are a trade power. And actually, most of the negotiations with other countries are making sure that these trade relations are important for the European Union have some outcomes. So do you think that one of the, like, the solutions for this deadlock could be actually progressively not excluding totally the sanctions? Because I believe that the sanctions are actually not working. But making sure that if North Korea is willing to negotiate, the EU might increase their trade relations and therefore might, for the size of the EU and North Korea, there might be incentive for them to give up all their nuclear.
Thank you. And the last one, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, my name is Kijukin, political minister at the Korean Mission in Brussels. Thank you for the very informative and extensive deliberations and presentations from the panel.
Can you speak louder, please?
Yes, I think we need to start to think in terms of past histories and experiences when we address North Korea's nuclear problem. North Korea repeatedly violated its commitment. That is the main cause of the lack of dialogue and the failure of dialogue. And dialogue per se does not solve the problem, that doesn't guarantee the solution. So I think we need to have credible commitment from the North Korea side. And now is the time to increase pressure. And I fully subscribe to the view expressed by Secretary Ione. We need to ratchet up the pressure so that North Korea change eventually their strategic thinking. Having said this, I would like to emphasize the role of the European Union. The backdrop of their policy vis a vis North Korea has a combination of two elements, critical and engagement. And now is the time to ratchet up critical part of this equation. And we look forward to stronger measures, building on the UN Security Council Resolution 270, filling up any possible loopholes. And we had certain discussions about that system. This is purely of defensive nature. We made this very clearly so far. And we do not want to have any disagreement with a neighbor. But this is a, you know, a decision that we really need to make to safeguard the lives and safety of our people. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We start with Mr. Veronsov?
Would you be so kind to repeat your question? I didn't hear very well.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. From my point of view, yes, I told that I'm visiting every year. I think that during the last, it means 15, 16 years, they have steady gradual improvement of economic situation. And in the last few years, by the way, under Kim Jong-un, this development, positive development accelerated. And one of the reason I told, of course, it's the economic reform became more decisive. For example, in 2015, May, we visited North Korea, it was lack of water. And they told, it was for a long time interruption of water supply in the hotel. And they told it's a result of the bigger lack of water because snow during the winter was not enough. And everybody expected that the harvest in the autumn will be very poor, but it did not happen. Harvest was not so bad. And we asked why, how it was possible to avoid their bad result. And they told that because the peasant became real insensitive. 40% and 50% of harvest remained in their own disposal. They tried to find water everywhere where it's possible and to bring this water to the product. And they succeeded, one of the result. Some people inside North Korea are speaking that nuclear weapons is more cheaper than conventional weapons. And when they succeeded visible and understandable result for themselves, that they succeeded indeed in their nuclear program, they reduced considerably their expenses for the conventional weapons and put additional resources. And some things. So, of course, sanctions, it's serious question. Of course, it's affect their economic development. But until now, they succeeded to adjust to sanctions regime. And they are speaking, we're living under sanctions during 40 years, 40. From the beginning of the republic creation, maybe more than 40. And we succeeded to find some mechanisms to adjust the sanctions effect. So I cannot predict how much it will continue under the very strong sanctions. But until now, what we can see, they succeeded to find the opportunity and find some resources for positive economic development. And it's continued during quite long period of stay. They succeeded to find finally their own style of economic reform. For a long time, they learned the experience of China, Vietnam, Russia, other countries' economic, market oriented economic reform. It seems to me that just now, they succeeded to adjust it for their peculiarities, for their specific conditions. So, once again, I cannot predict, but it's possible that the positive trend of economic development will continue. What about the more hard sanctions, more tough sanctions? I don't know. It should be defined by the participants of Security Council. And once again, I repeat, I cannot predict, I don't know, simply, and I cannot know. But all country has their own interest. China has own business with North Korea and tried to protect it. Russia also has own business with North Korea and tried to save it. It was in case with 2270, yes, resolution. So, it's objective, objective elements that cannot be neglected. And, yes, and the European unity representative are doing business, successful business in North Korea.
Approximately 30 million euros 10 years before, it was 300 million. So it was decreased by 90%. There is nothing, no trade.
But North Korea succeeded to produce excellent goat cheese. And definitely, some European guy helps them do it. And with sanctions and isolations. We do remember that during the period of Kim D. June and No Mo Hyun, president in South Korea, South Korea was the main trade partner of North Korea, about 6 billions of dollar. And South Korea invested considerable amount of money to North Korea. And as I know, some economic specialist in South Korea hoped that it's some kind of linkage, some kind of leverage over North Korea. Just now, inter-Korean trade, zero, no investments, no contact. But North Korea demonstrated that they can live without South Korea assistance. They can live and develop. So we should, when we speak about sanctions, yes, in the Iran case, it's worked. But in North Korea, have a little bit more peculiarities. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexander. Do you, you have to add something? Well, by the way, we still have time because there is nothing to do at 6. Well, the reception, the reception between 6 and 7, I mean, we cannot be late maybe 1 minute or 10 minutes before drinking. So, let us.
Yeah, at which point we will all need a drink at that time because this issue is so sobering. On the comments about reunification with a nuclear armed North Korea, bottom line is, I cannot see a scenario in which we would use that term, one sovereign state with the North having nuclear weapons. We would have to call it something very different, probably two-state situation. So I cannot imagine that scenario at all with nuclear weapons in the North, practically speaking. The question about the South Korean scandal that's happening right now. I can go for hours speaking about that scandal. But as it stands today, my sense is that this scandal has not affected policymakers who deal with, who work on North Korea and foreign policy. And my sense is that the current plan And my sense is that the current plan is to continue with existing approaches and policies. Now, while that is still in place, and my sense is that the chain of command is still in place for that issue. But going forward, and even the policymakers themselves, don't seem to know exactly what will happen to their chain of command and their portfolio, and who is the control tower should President Park be forced to step down. Now, there are different scenarios of what could happen to her fate. But so far, I mean, even with this scandal, they are, we are seeing the administration continue with plans. She has ordered her, her people to, to try to, by year's end, complete G-SOMIA, which is the intelligence sharing with Japan. And so, and we can expect, currently, we can expect the South Korean administration to continue with that deployment. But again, that, the fate of that depends on what happens if she is forced to step down, if they form a neutral cabinet where she does, she may not have the powers to exercise on foreign policy, we'll have to see that. The other variable here is, again, who is elected as the next South Korean president, whether those elections occur ahead of schedule because of this situation, or whether they happen on time in December next year. Because if we see a progressive South Korean president, the progressives would be more inclined to engage in proactive engagement versus principled engagement, which is the current policy for the conservatives. In terms of the, what securities can we give North Korea? Well, the simple answer there is security assurances, and, and, and they know that. All six parties know what's on the table. They all know what we're dealing with. Now, North Korea is surely, you know, concerned that, and they don't trust the US, because they're concerned that their fate may be the same as Libya's, once they give up the nuclear weapons, perhaps the US might invade them. And so in that sense, it would have to, there would have to be a firm commitment that the US would not, and I cannot imagine a scenario where the US would do this, but there would have to be a commitment that Washington would not invade the North once the North gave up its nuclear programs. And just as a side note, in terms of the Pyongyang notion, the simultaneous, the dual military economic development strategic line that they're employing, this has been, Pyongyang has been a decades old strategic line, it's nothing new. But Kim Jong-un has revived it, Kim Jong-il didn't. He only focused on the military first. Kim Jong-un has revived it, and he has given his tweak to it. So it's economic and military development, but he's given the tweak of putting in nuclear development in the military track. And, and Alexander will probably know this better than I, but my interlocutors tell me that the economic development track, they're, they're embarking on that track with as much fervor as their nuclear development track. And I hear that they're even moving some of their military personnel to engage in economic development, so that's how fiercely they're trying to, to achieve both. Now, whether that will be sustainable or not, we're not sure. But again, someone already said this, that the, the North is good at adapting to sanctions, and their attitude, and their attitude and their comments clearly make it sound like they're saying, bring it on, bring on all the sanctions you want, we're still going on our course. And so that, that currently is the dilemma, the sanctions that are in place now and the sanctions that we're envisioning going forward, really is to try to convince them to come to the negotiating table and to curb their nuclear weapons programs. And we've seen a precedent, we've seen that with BDA back in two thousand and five. In terms of what Mark mentioned about the EU and South Korean desires for isolation, yes, and we can, they are doing this, they are courting EU, as you know very well, EU states to, to, to help with the sanctions, to help further isolate the North. And this can be understood as their way of trying to build credible pressure and leverage. Now, now it may not seem like it on the surface, but they're still, the ROK is still firmly committed to, to diplomacy engagement, but of course, there are lots of preconditions. Of course, the North has to show signs that it is serious about denuclearization. But this is the ROK's way, and, and they would not want to see holes in the international communities unified front towards the Sun, so that's why we'll see this. Now, again, a, a big variable here is who is going to win the next South Korean presidential election. And so that's when we would need to be prepared. Of course, Washington would also have to be prepared in coordinating and syncing its coordination with the new South Korean presidents.
Thank you. Chair, you want to add something?
Uh, seemingly, I don't have questions, but I just want to make one observation. The DPRK is a rational actor, which always make wrong calculations.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much. This is very interesting, because these are endless discussions. And these are endless discussion, because the problem with DPRK is that for some countries, DPRK is a strategic issue, a card to play. And for other country, it is a security issue, a, a, a program to be contained. And that, that's, I would say, the, the core of our problem. Thank you very much for this, and, and have a good reception and drinks, et cetera. Thank you.